To advocate for those needs and services through monitoring federal, state, and local policy that impact women and families and make recommendations to our legislators. The commission has given away over $30,000 in that 10 years to individuals, teachers, and students, organizations such as Stepping Stones and Dune Brook, as well as special projects, such as the Naomi Anderson sculpture. Has everyone had a chance to see that amazing sculpture and community? That was just an incredible project. But if you haven't, West Cop Park is just right down the way. So on your way home, take a look at and spend some time there. This year, our focus is on maternal and infant mortality issues, which is why we wanted to bring you all together, to have a conversation, to find ways that we can help advocate for what is needed for women and families, and to support all of you, the amazing and dedicated group service providers, nurses, case managers, and organizations that are here today. Today, we will hear from a few organizations, from prenatal care to birth to family and children advocates. We want to listen to help us gain an understanding of what we have here in Michigan City and LaPorte County, and find ways to support and help improve the health outcomes of women and children. I will say, I've had a crash course in women's issues this week, past few weeks. And it is so great to hear that there are so many collaborations happening, and that you are working together. And I'm going to thank Albertine again for your continued health reports and the commission and your work with Minority Health. I want to thank Maria Fruth and Mary Wellnitz for taking the time to share the incredible collaborative programs that the LaPorte County Health Foundation has initiated. And we will hear about some of those programs later in the program. The commission's goal is to continue to learn and find ways that we can help by spreading awareness to your programs and potentially supporting through legislative action. On your table, you will see a nice scroll of a document that has a legislative report. So as the Women's Commission, we are paying attention to what is happening legislatively. On the other side, you will find the advocating for community action and women's health care, because we all can make a difference if we come together. Lost my page. Great. Today, we will share a meal, listen and engage in conversation that will help us figure out how we can advocate for community change. If we come to the table to help solve the problems together in all of our areas, I believe we continue to make positive outcomes. So we're a little running short on time, but we started a little late, but that's all good. So we want to get right to our speakers. Our first speaker is Jodi Perrin from Franciscan Prenatal Program. Jodi Perrin is a prenatal care coordinator at Franciscan Health's Michigan City Prenatal Assistance Program and Diaper Pantry Program. Special areas are car seat technician, safe sleep ambassador, breastfeeding consultant, and perinatal mood disorders with backgrounds in case management. Allows Jodi to assist caregivers with a wide range of needs, addressing barriers by connection of resources and providing support and encouragement with a smile is a passion that pushes me every day. So thank you, Jodi, for joining us.
Thank you.
From you.
I have to talk.
Good. You have to hold it back. All right. Is that better? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Wow, thank you. Thank you for inviting me here to not only share a couple of new programs that Franciscan has to offer the community, but to also share the wonderful work that is being done in our community to address and recognize health equity and the concerns that we have for our community and want to do better. So thank you very much. With that said, LaPorte County does have a need, a great need, especially in the area of infant mortality. Our infant mortality rate has been staggering at around 11% the last couple of years, and that's really high. That's higher than Lake County, that's higher than Marion County down in Indianapolis. So we are very high. And although we understand a little bit of the reasons why that's happening now, we need to address the how, and we need to address the gaps, and we need to figure out the partnerships that we can all work together to make this a lower immortality rate for the infants. With that said, we know that non-Hispanic Black women, and we know that Hispanic women aren't getting early prenatal care. And early prenatal care is really not only important for the health of the pregnancy, but to get that first year of life going. So that's huge. We also know that smoking is huge in LaPorte County, and substance use is huge in LaPorte County, especially during pregnancy. So again, understanding the how, understanding the why, and figuring out how to partner to best address these needs so that we can lower those rates. I don't have to stand here and probably tell you the difference between equality and equity, because I know that many of you here in this room already have that. But it is really great to see and work in a community, and I will be honest when I say that, who is trying to recognize and address health equity for what it really is, and understand that the same box doesn't work for everybody. Okay? And we all need different boxes, we all need different sizes, and some of us need multiple boxes in order to get that same view at the top of the fence. And it's really not going to be until we get there that we reach that highest goal. And the highest goal in health equity is that every member in our community gets that high level of health care, right? So that's really why we're here. Franciscan partnered with Beacon to get a safety pin grant to provide the prenatal assistance program, and that's why I'm here. So prenatal assistance program works with prenatal moms and caregivers with children under the age of one. And in that, the really main goals of that program is resource navigation, advocacy, and making sure that mom or caregiver has access to all the needs that they have, whether that is insurance, and we have navigators, whether that is a doula, and we have doulas, whether that is Nurse Family Partners, Dune Brook, whether it's Women's Care Center, you name it, it doesn't matter, whatever they need. Maybe they need transportation to get to those doctor visits. So our huge thing in the goal of the program is to reduce the barriers and obtain access to health care. We also do the advocacy, and then we have an incentive program where they can get baby supplies in our Babes Store. And another program that Franciscan partnered with the National Diaper Pantry and Geminis funding was to provide diapers. So we have a diaper disparity also in LaPorte County, which is maybe weird to say, but oddly and strangely enough, diapers are expensive, and bills need to come first. So we have this funding program now, and we have a diaper pantry. They can be eligible even if they don't have a WIC, or Medicaid, or a government subsidized assistance program. You get something no matter who you are, because we know that the need is great. So I have information in the back there, and if you want to pick up the flyers and the brochures, please help yourself, please share it. You don't have to be in a program in order to get that assistance. And then I look forward to any questions that you have for it and any collaboration. But I also want to share the work that I see the community do. And this is what really excites me. I'm going to put this away now. I thought I would forget all of my words, and maybe I will, but that's okay. I have been a witness for the last year and a half of some really great collaborations in LaPorte County, and that is a blessing as a case manager, because coming from a past of case management where, when you work with corporations, hospitals, community partners and organizations and service providers, they feel a little competitive and a little secretive. So what I have noticed in this community is that everybody is trying to really work together to figure out best practices and how we can help one another lead to that goal, to that main goal. One of the things that happened that I thought was wonderful is that, first of all, we had transportation issues. Somebody brought that to the table. Now Paladin offers transportation to our high-risk moms that can go to Valparaiso and can go to South Bend, because Medicaid wasn't taking them outside of Michigan City. So that was wonderful. And that wouldn't have happened if our community partners like Dune Brook, or Women's Care Center, or us, or anybody didn't mention it. And that wouldn't have happened if the Health Foundation didn't take that on charge. And they did. So now we have that in place. Another thing that I really like to say is, you know, our own Nyla Williams, come on, she is Franciscan's Community Health Improvement Coordinator, and she has brought programs to the community, whether it's health screenings, or whether it's education, she's really trying to get it to people where they are, with the assumption that we can't always expect people to come to us, right? We have to meet people where they are. So that's been really nice to look at, because you see it in all aspects of the community. Some other great things that have taken place is that the LaPorte Health Foundation this year created a Safe Sleep Initiative to address the infant mortality rate. And they got us all together, all of us community partners, whether we were hospitals, whether we were community organizations, whether we were service providers, didn't matter, we were all gathered to a table to figure out how to best have same messaging, because we know as successes from other counties, you can make a difference with same messaging, same logos, same techniques, and it can reduce our infant mortality rate. So we're hoping that that works together. And the LaPorte Health Foundation also created a FEMA. I don't know if any of you are familiar with a FEMA review team, but they basically look at all of those statistics and all of those cases, and they try to figure out why these infant deaths happened, and then create an action team to try to prevent strategies that we can, again, go back to the partnerships, go back to the collaborators, and to the teams in all aspects of the community, to really figure out how we can address the how. And I think it's been a real honor to work with people who understand that until we actually recognize the inequalities, until we recognize and address the implicit bias that we might have, and until we recognize the importance of the collaboration and tearing down the walls, that we will begin to build the boxes for the people who need them so that we're all at the same level. So again, thank you very much. And I know that there are so many programs I didn't even mention, and I know you're out there, and I love you. You guys have been so supportive of Franciscan, and Franciscan wants to do everything that we can to try to be supportive of your programs, too. So thank you very much. Thank you. That was awesome. Thank you so much, Jodi. We're going to hear from Keisha Ward from Minority Health.
All right. Good afternoon. Good morning. I'm not sure. All right. So I am Keisha Ward. Just if any of you don't know me, that's me. I am homegrown. I'm from Michigan City, born and raised, a proud Elston High School graduate, proud graduate of Indiana University, studying, woo-hoo, studying African-American Studies and Sociology, as well as Psychology, and did some, a lot of things in the community before now, before reaching this point, worked for school system, coached basketball, all of that kind of stuff. So here I am today as the newest Director of Minority Health Partners of LaPorte County. So let me give a shout out to former steel worker, woo-hoo, steel worker friend. All right. So who we are as Minority Health Partners is, our mission is that we would improve health in minority communities through advocacy and prevention programs and increasing health care accessibility by fostering effective collaboration of community resources. And who we are is, again, MHPLC Minority Health Partners of LaPorte County, and we're nonprofit, we're grassroots, and we were created in 1993 by the Black Caucus and Concerned Healthcare Professionals. We unite with the entire LaPorte County area, as well as surrounding communities, to provide service and leadership to improve the health status of our diverse minority population. What we do, as our purpose, excuse me, and our goal, oftentimes minorities are disproportionately affected by diseases in LaPorte County, and through effective partnership with various community resources, we plan to address these concerns through health resources, program services, outreach, disease prevention, advocacy, resource information, and referrals. And our goal is to develop and implement prevention projects with community organizations. And some of the things that we do, the chronic disease training, is we deal with heart, the heart strokes oral health, cancers, diabetes, and obesity. Some of the things that we do, especially, I would name some of the programs, we do a program called Shining Smiles, and where we go in and we work with, especially recently, we work with the little ones, we go into school system, we talk to them about the importance of brushing our teeth, some things that are simple, but it's good to learn while you're young, brushing our teeth, taking care of your teeth, your oral health, and how it'll benefit you throughout your life. So learning some of these things early, as we all know, will help you later in life. And for obesity, the example I can give you is, we do a program called Fit Kids, where we go into the schools, and again, we work with young people, and we go in, and the program, what it does is, for example, we'll have a group of, our last group was probably fourth and fifth grade into sixth grade, and so we have them to come in, we talk to them a couple times a week, we talk about fresh, eating fresh fruits, vegetables, what they do for you, drinking enough water, just having a balanced diet, not all one thing, not Twinkies all the time, not candy all the time, like I tried to do as a little kid, but eating well now, while you're in the fourth grade, fifth grade, so that you can have these good habits as an adult. And so along with that, we would pair that up with exercise. So because they were children, oftentimes we would go in with games, or I would have games in mind, or I would play a game with them, or dodgeball, Ms. Allen would see me out here playing with them, but just we want to keep them moving. And we talk about how that's important, your heart rate, using your heart as a muscle, knowing that your heart is a muscle, and keeping yourself moving is so important. So learning that early is important. So that's something that we do. And we also have a program for teen pregnancy prevention, tobacco cessation, HIV, STD, and AIDS, Body and Soul, Bienvenido, and infant mortality. We do those programs. We've also gone in the community in recent times and done luncheons, where we would provide a lunch and have people to come in and get COVID shots, or if they didn't have their shots, or come in and get boosted. So things like that. Also, we want to reach out to the elderly, we want to work on something where they would get some exercise, or even get out, have outings, and not be so isolated. And because isolation causes so many things, loneliness can literally, physically begin to hurt, and it can manifest itself in illness. So we do want to reach out in those ways as too, those ways as well, I'm sorry. And if you all want to be a part, or you have to do, you can reach out, I'm right here, I have my cards. If you want to go as a member individually, it's $20. Professionals, it's $50. Organizations are $100. Corporations are $150. So please be in touch. If this is your heart's desire, let me know. I have cards, and I have pamphlets, so you can easily email, call, write, whatever you send a message in the bottom, let me know, and we will be in touch. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Keisha. Thank you. Thank you, Keisha. Appreciate all the work that you and our community. We're now going to hear from our doula, Susan Inmarado. And we know that doulas' programs really work, hello, hello, okay, for better health outcomes. And so Susan has always lived surrounded by a variety of languages, culture, and social economic levels. Before becoming a doula in September 2020, she worked in a number of positions related to children, family, and social justice. She worked for Chicago Public Library as a librarian, for El Campito and South Bend as a parent educator and director. She also was a Montessori toddler and pre-K teacher here in Michigan City. So happy to have you.
Thank you. I'm going to try and be brief. In addition to all that, I'm a certified birth doula through Dona International. I'm a community health worker, and I'm also a certified medical interpreter for English and Spanish. So what's a doula? Raise your hand if you have ever heard of a doula. Do you know what that is? Does somebody want to tell me in a couple words what a birth doula does? A coach. Somebody said coach. That's exactly right. A birth coach, a birth companion, were not medically trained. For me, being a doula is to be of service. We're advocates, witnesses, and somebody who offers both practical and emotional support to the birthing people. My job is to be the calm in the storm. As many of you know, giving birth is an emotional process, and it's emotional for the family members who might be there. And my job is to stay calm, no matter what. I offer comfort measures, different positions for labor and delivery, and support for the family and the client. My focus is on the social and emotional aspects of giving birth, both before, during, and after. And I have come to see how the emotions of everybody in the room, not just that person who's giving birth, but the family and the medical personnel, will affect what happens physically. So why would anybody need a doula? Some doulas, a private doula can cost you anywhere from $800, $900 to thousands, $3,000, $4,000. Why would somebody want to do that? So one of the things that, one of the reasons is all of that that I said above, but I'm there as a support for the family members. Whoever their support people are, I'm supporting them, too. So a lot of times, if there's some kind of hands-on comfort, or hands-on, I will encourage that support person, that birthing person is chosen, I'll encourage that person to do it. A lot of times, the family members want to help, but they have no idea what to do. So my job is to help them know what to do. I might be the only familiar person other than their support people that they know. So the way our medical systems work, our OB practices, midwife practices, that client may have no idea who's going to show up to her birth. Or she may have three different doctors and three different nursing staffs if her labor is a long one. So we may be the only familiar person. Ideally, I spend months getting to know not just that person, but the family, whoever else is going to be there as well. I offer perspective and experience. So I'm not part of the hospital personnel. I'm also not part of the family. So I have that perspective that can sometimes be that calm. A voice and a witness, as we know, things can go wrong. I'm a voice and a witness when that happens. I'm a person to help them talk about their birth experiences, not just whatever birth experience is currently happening, but any other birth experiences that they've had, and we're a continued support for them for the first year of the baby's life. So I work for IMHC Community Doula Services, a community doula. Our services are free to the clients. We have funding from the Indiana State Department of Health, and we have funding to hire new doulas from MHS. We serve Cass County, St. Joe County, Elkhart County, and LaPorte Counties at this time. Why those counties? Unfortunately, is because those are the counties with the highest infant and maternal rates, death rates, in the state. And Indiana, unfortunately, is close to the lowest, you know, in birth outcomes for moms and babies in the whole nation. So out of 50, we're 47, 48, something like that, right? We focus on low-income and minority clients, Medicaid-eligible. In 2020 to 2022, we served 153 women, 50% were Black, 34% Hispanic, the other 16% Native American, Asian, Polynesian, African, just mixed, white, all different. So we try not to turn people away. If we, it seems as if they might be high-income, then we might help them find a private doula, but most of the people come to us, and they have no other way of having a doula. Our group, our IMHC sponsors monthly an ECHO series, which is an educational medical series on maternal infant health. So on those monthly Zoom meetings, we have doctors, we have labor and delivery nurses, we have researchers, we have insurance companies, we have representatives of the State Department of Health every month. And we have different topics. So we might have preeclampsia, we might have, you know, just any variety of things related to birth outcomes. And so that is something, if you work in the medical field, you can join those calls, and you can get continuing ad credits for joining that. We're also the Indiana sponsor of Count the Kicks, which is an app that you can download to prevent stillbirth. We also have weekly touch base calls for our Indiana Minority Health, which often also include representatives from the insurance companies and the Department of Health. Why would that be important? So when we talk about advocacy and having a voice, so one mom and one doula and witnessing one event doesn't give you a whole lot of power to change whatever went wrong. But when you start saying, I have this many clients who have had this happen, and you're talking in front of representatives from the State Department of Health, when we say, yes, it's a federal law, they're supposed to have an interpreter, but the hospital is telling them they don't have one, those things get raised up. They get raised up to the level of people that can do something about it. I'm going to end with a quote. This is from a book, 1986, The Exceptional, actually, the book's called Love, Medicine, and Miracles by Bernie Siegel. It's called The Exceptional Patient. Exceptional patients refuse to be victims. They educate themselves and become specialists in their own care. They question the doctor, because they want to understand their treatment and participate in it. They demand dignity, personhood, and control. And that's what we want for every single birthing person in the hospitals here and all across the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we're going to hear from Maria Troschkov. And she has many, has had many careers, many roles throughout her career. For the past 10 years, she has been with the WIC Program Manager at Northwest Indiana Community Action. Northwest Indiana Community Action has the second-largest WIC program, that's Women, Infants, and Children program in the state, with the locations in Lake, LaPorte, Porter, Newton, Jasper, and Pulaski Counties. Maria has her bachelor's in dietetics and an MBA. With this background, this has given her the knowledge and skills to make a positive impact on the lives of women, infants, and children in her community. So welcome here.
the WIC program for 22 years, and the WIC program has advanced so much from when I first started 22 years ago. Back then, I feel like we were known as the formula program, and we have just evolved into so much more. I'm very proud of where our program is right now. We do a lot in the community, and we have a lot of community partners that I'm very proud that we are partnered with, with Nurse Family Partnership, with prenatal assistance programs, with healthy families. So we're all working towards the same goal when it comes to infant mortality. Governor Holcomb had set a goal for Indiana to become the best state Midwest for infant mortality by 2024. I'm not sure we're going to reach that goal, but with all of us working together, hopefully, we could at least get those numbers to be better than where they're at right now. So what do we specifically do at the WIC program for infant mortality? Breastfeeding. Breastfeeding, our breastfeeding program is top-notch. We have three international board certified lactation consultants that work for us. All of our registered nurses, registered dietitian, and nutritionist, we're all certified lactation specialists. So we all have the background and the education to provide the support for our clients. We have a robust We have a robust peer counselor program. Our peer counselors, they're there to provide support for our clients. They're peers. Our clients, they tend to open up more to our peer counselors than they do to our nurses and dietitians because it's a peer to them. It's not someone educating them on, kind of like scolding them about breastfeeding. So just for example, Gary, 10 years ago, our initiation rates for breastfeeding, we were at 62%. In 10 years, we've come up to 72% for breastfeeding initiation rates. Yeah. Because of that, in 2020, we won the Gold Standard Award through the USDA Loving Supportive Excellence Program because of our breastfeeding promotion and because of all the support that we do provide in the community. The other things that we do is the foods that we provide. We offer proper nutrients for our moms. We definitely look at the weights. We want the moms coming in to be at a healthy prenatal or pre-pregnancy weight. And during their pregnancy, want to make sure that they're gaining enough weight and not excessive amounts of weight. Our dietitians, they're able to provide medical nutrition therapy for chronic conditions like obesity, diabetes, high cholesterol. And also, we have our partners that we send our clients to for smoking sensation. Our agency, NICA, they also offer programs to improve the quality of our families and reduce stressors that can contribute to infant mortality. So just for example, for financial support, we have our weatherization program and our energy assistance program. And then we have our family development program that offers families assistance and resources to be self-sufficient. That I want to talk about, and I know it's already been mentioned a little bit, is in Lake County, we have, hello, okay. We have partnered with pretty much all of our hospitals, Healthy Families, Nurse Family Partnership, the Health Department, DCIS, FEMA. And we have developed the Lake County Community Action Team. With the help of the Indiana Department of Health, we have developed this team. And it's all about infant mortality, from safe sleep to car seats, you name it, we do it. So last summer, we did our first event. It was a Touch a Truck event. We did it out in Sherville, Indiana, and there was about 2,000 participants who came through. So it was a huge success. So for here in La Porte County, I think I've heard a little bit that something like this has already been started. But I think everyone coming in together will definitely help, so.
Wonderful networking happening all over the place. And that's what this is all about, really, creating those conversations and relationships so that we can make the big changes. So appreciate that. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dr. Tammy Button, who earned her DDS from Indiana University School of Dentistry and her MSD in Pediatric Dentistry from Riley Hospital for Children in Indianapolis. A clinical pediatric dentist for more than 15 years, Dr. Button is known for cultivating community partnerships that promote health and wellbeing for children and families, which of course includes healthy smiles. With the best job in the world, Dr. Button serves as the Executive Director of Dune Brook, Inc., which is a nonprofit organization dedicated to every child's safety, health, and happiness. She also serves as the president and founder of the South Shore Skipping Stones, a nonprofit organization that provides pregnancy and infant oral health education in both English and Spanish. Her best day ever is a day of sailing or any water adventure with her four-year-old daughter Beatrice and her husband Dan. Thank you, Dr. Button.
Thank you so much. It's a real honor to be here today and also to be talking in front of the people that are gathered here today. The years of experience in this room, the people that have made things happen in this community is just overwhelming. So just going to soak it in for a second, I think. So thank you so much. And as it was mentioned, I started my career as a pediatric dentist fixing kids' teeth. And it was so much fun. The stories I have, the number of times since my last name is Button, I was called Dr. Belly Button. I mean, that's the best job, it really is. Learning the intricacies between the difference between grilled cheese on white bread with yellow cheese or brown bread with polka dot cheese. If you want to go into that more later, I'm happy to do that with you too. One of the things over those years was realizing that the couple of minutes that I have with the family to talk about some pretty tough things when it comes to oral health issues, kids that end up in the hospital because of infection, two-year-olds that need all of their teeth taken out, those are not things that you can unravel in just a couple of minutes. And so for me as a practitioner, when, you know, I see 60-some patients a day, and anybody that's here that also sees patients, you know that you have to keep moving. And so that was not my forte. If anybody spent time waiting on me in this room, I'm very sorry. Because that was really usually a long wait time. However, with some guidance and support, early support from some people in this room, I was able to start a way of speaking with patients a little bit more on an individual level and realizing that there's a lot going on when, as a mother, you find out that your child needs to have all of their teeth taken out beyond just me sitting there telling you what has to happen. And realizing that the mom has some deep-seated issues about what happened with her own oral health growing up and then now seeing it in her child. And everything that you can discuss and even just 20 minutes of quiet together really helped me to realize too that there's just so much more. And if we want healthy teeth, then we want healthy kids and we want healthy families. So because of that thought process, I was able to collaborate with a great organization in La Porte County called Dune Brook. And some of the people that started Dune Brook over 30 years ago with some really innovative thinking, one of them, Chris Pate, sitting right there. We still have some job descriptions and things that were written by you. So, but that early innovative thinking about, you know, child, Dune Brook, for those of you who aren't familiar, Dune Brook is a child abuse prevention and intervention organization. And 30 years ago, child abuse wasn't really talked about much in the community. So there really weren't a lot of resources in the community for it. So that early grassroots thinking brought about Dune Brook and its Child Advocacy Center. And the Child Advocacy Center is somewhere that in our area, children that have a suspected case of abuse come for an interview. And everybody that is involved in helping that case would gather there. That would be law enforcement, anybody from Department of Child Services, a healthcare provider, the prosecutor's office. Everybody comes together there to be able to hear the same things, be able to ask the same questions. The child doesn't have to go to a police station to say this. They come to Dune Brook, which has a wonderfully inviting living room. It looks like just coming into a home. And they can tell their story in a supported environment. And so that collaboration goes on in our community. Not all communities have a Child Advocacy Center or all of the people that are willing to come together like that. And that's because of a lot of people that just work tirelessly in this area to make that happen. And Dune Brook has other programs that start during pregnancy and then span up to 18 years of age. And as it was mentioned, the Women's Commission, they provide funding for snacks for our Child Advocacy Center. Kids, as you can imagine, are hungry. They come in at all times of the day. Other programs at Dune Brook are graciously funded by the Healthcare Foundation of La Porte. Thank you so much, Maria, for everything that your forward-thinking has brought into this community. As has been mentioned with the Partnership for Healthy Babies and just the Safe Sleep Initiative, the things that you dream up and make happen are incredible. It is, you're right, yes. And same, Chris Pate with United Way graciously support Dune Brook programs as well. And Dune Brook doesn't exist without collaborations. Everything we do depends on there being a community component to follow up with things. Healthy Families, the home visiting program starts during birth, or excuse me, during pregnancy and goes all the way through the age of five. So the way that that works is when you're pregnant, you start to have somebody come to your home to visit with you, to support you, to bring whatever you might need. And then that goes all the way through the age of five. There's different screening processes that go on during that time to identify different things that might need to be helped with the child. If we don't have people in the community for those referrals, it doesn't happen. And we have an immense amount of quality referrals. And as Jody mentioned, with the prenatal assistance program, and I know that Laura's here from Nurse Family Partnership, the way that these programs work together is amazing. It's not about competition, it's about, okay, how can we help? And I think this family might benefit from this program. So there's no room for competition, it's collaboration. And that's all that we really see when it comes to these programs. One of the great things that is measured by Healthy Families is what's the percentage of kids that have a medical home that are in the program? Medical homes are a big indicator of the health of the child as well as is there a plan in place with the medical care? 98% of the families enrolled in Healthy Families report having a medical home. And that also speaks to the fact in this area, we have phenomenal providers for pediatrics. We really do. And I have a four-year-old and our pediatrician is fantastic. I do have a feeling that we are marked on the chart. Don't get in a room with these people by themselves because we ask questions. We are, I guess you'd call geriatric parents. We're warriors and we ask a lot of things, so. But we feel supported every single time, which is wonderful. And I know that they do the same for everybody. It doesn't matter who's in their room at the time. Some of the other programs that Dune Brook offers as well, we have parent and family education. We have parenting classes that children of any age with their parents can partake in. It's, the curriculum is called nurturing parenting, which is one that's been around for quite some time. But the neat thing about it is it really addresses the parents' own feelings about how they were parented because we all are triggered by different things. So things that happened to you as a child, things in your parenting experience that may not have really gelled well with you. You've got to really look at those so that you know then when you're triggered by your own child, it happens every day, how do you deal with that? And then we can work on communication. We can learn about development and how to deal with a two-year-old's feelings or whatever age you might be having. And one of the areas in our county that is a staggering statistic is the number of parents that are also in recovery. And so we are focusing on parents in recovery to make sure that that group is not left out because you don't really separate parenting and recovery. It's one and the same when it comes to if those are both things going on in your life. And the other program at Dune Brook, our Body Safety Program, is one that's in the schools that we are able to reach over 30,000 kids a year with sexual abuse prevention, starting in kindergarten all the way through the age of 12. I'm sorry, through 12th grade, after lunch, I guess. So that's a lot of kids that hear a message, a consistent message every year about that it's their body, it's their right to say no. And if they think that something is happening, to identify those safe people in their lives. And that's really, really important. And, you know, just even things that you might not really think about in a child's life that they may not like, even if it's not something that has an ill intent, but if they would prefer not to be tickled or whatever it might be. To let them know that that's okay to say, "I don't like that," then leads to the next time with a little bit bigger that they're okay to say, "No." So those are really important things in our community. And again, none of this happens without the school system, without our funders, without people that we can refer to. And Dune Brook is a special place. And like I said, it is really the best job in the world because I don't say anything that I don't truly believe in as far as there are fantastic things that go on there. And as a parent, I feel like I'm a better parent because of some of the things I've learned just since I've been at Dune Brook. So I'm always okay to say that I don't have all the answers and I never will. My daughter will agree with you. And I think that's really important too, that people in a perceived position of importance maybe are okay with saying that, as a parent, I don't have all the answers either, but together, we can find out what's best for you. So normalizing the fact that at some point, we all need help, I think is really an important thing for everyone to be able to hear. And as it's been mentioned, this community has incredible things, really incredible. I've practiced in different parts of the country and different parts of Indiana. And I can tell you, again, as a provider, the resources that are available to providers for referrals is incredible here in La Porte County and this area. One of the, just a personal thing that I feel each and every one of us can do from wherever you are, from whatever you do, the postpartum time for a family is such a critical time for that bonding, for the mom to return to whatever was going on in her life before she had a baby, realizing that that will never happen, going back to that, figuring out how to balance all these things and be sleep deprived at the same time. That's a, oh my gosh. When my husband and I drove our daughter to the first pediatrician appointment, he looked at me and he said, "Are we safe to drive?" And neither one of us could answer that question. And, you know, but that's the, those are the things that are, again, when you think about safe sleep and you think about all of the things that are happening in those first months when parents are so sleep deprived. Again, that support is just so important. And on the scroll that was provided to us at the very bottom there, some of the things that aren't being looked at at legislation this season include maternity leave issues and some breastfeeding space requirements, some different things that each and every one of us could probably just take a little initiative wherever we work and make sure that we have breastfeeding space that isn't the bathroom. Yes. And we also make time for those that are breastfeeding, if they're pumping at work. That's a big, a big deal. When I went back to work and was pumping, I had no idea how to make that happen at all and continue with my schedule. So just providing that support, looking at policies. How are we, how are we supporting our families during that postpartum time? How are we supporting our neighbors? Just reaching out in any way we can during that postpartum time because that really is a critical time. One of the really cool jobs that I had as a pediatric dentist, I worked in an Amish country for a while in a clinic there. And one of my assistants was a 16-year-old Amish woman. And I would pick her up every morning on the way to work. And so she would, she was also in her season of Rumspringa. So she had a cell phone and she'd take her Snapchat pictures and, you know, we'd get to work. And, but we got to chat in the morning. And she shared with me that she was so excited because her sister, who was getting ready to have triplets, had chosen her to be her nursemaid, which meant that she would be the one to take care of all the things in the house, deal with the other five kids. And, oh, I guess I've been cut off. Oh, there we go. And so that mom could rest and let her milk come in in a healthy way. And I thought, wow, that is really powerful. And that's just- And that's just, you know, the way that that community makes sure that that happens. Well, that might not be possible in our community. There certainly are ways that we can make sure that a new mom gets a little bit more rest, and not just sleep when baby sleeps, because if nobody else is doing anything when baby's sleeping, you've set yourself up for a really bad situation, so... But make that possible. That'd be my suggestion to this room of people that really know how to make things happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you, Dr. Button, and all of our speakers for laying the groundwork. We are slightly short on time, but I'd still like to do a bit of a group conversation within your table. On your tables, there is a small white piece of paper with some questions. And as your table, we'd like you to write down any ideas that come from this, this, these questions here. I'm going to give you about five minutes, just so that we have some information, because it's a magical moment to have all of you in the room together. Your expertise, your knowledge, your awareness is what we want to gather, so that we can make some changes. And as Dr. Button said, you know, legislatively, there were some bills that came to the table for breastfeeding and breaks that didn't make it to the floor, right? So, how do we pay attention to that? But we really need your input here. So, some of those questions are about advocacy, service provider concerns. Guys might have, yeah, you go, you have service provider concerns. And even if you aren't in the industry, we value your input. So, what did you hear today? How are you embracing equity in your life? And what do you, would you like to see happen in our community for women in maternal health? That's just five minutes. Maybe you can just, yes. Right on the table, right, right, right on the table. Yep, right on the table. I'm timed this, we have five minutes. All right, we've got to wrap it up a little bit. So, hello, hello. We're going to come back to... Actually, it's so great that there is such vibrant conversations happening at each table, and I do see that you're writing it down. So, writing it down is very important for us, so that we can collect this, these thoughts and information, and all of that. But with a little bit of time, if anyone from one of your, the tables like to state anything that they discovered, any big ideas that came up? Anyone would like to share with everyone else in the room? Great, here we go.
All right. Well, we, of course, were just so pleased to hear of all the great programs going on in La Porte County, but then have to acknowledge that despite all that, we have bad outcomes. So, where's the gap? What, you know, what isn't happening, such that we have this terribly high maternal mortality rate? So, we really, we're leaning all in on girls' education. But then, of course, we had to acknowledge that our state legislature does not want us to talk to young people about human sexuality. And so, we proposed that a way to possibly get around that was to equate child abuse prevention education with young girls' sex education, in a way that, you know, perhaps it would be allowed. So, because everyone, you know, we're all very much restricted now, and certainly in public schools, very restricted now on what we can teach for sex education. It has to include abstinence, and it can't include a whole lot else. And of course, there's a bill, you know, moving through the legislature right now that will prohibit any discussion of human sexuality in grades kindergarten through third, which, of course, we don't do anyway. But, you know, anyway, the legislature always likes to try to make a law to address an issue that doesn't exist. But, so, am I missing anything?
No, you did.
Okay. I think that was it.
Great. Thank you, thank you. We have one over here.
We, we talked about mostly about accessibility, and how can we provide more mobile opportunities into communities that need access, and, and utilizing whatever is effective in the community. So, in a rural area, it may not be a church, but whatever that local organization is, we talked about local churches going to people. Everybody, especially people of color, don't have great experiences at hospitals. So, you have to bring the resources into the community, or to their local church, or, or somewhere where they feel safe, so that whether it's dental, I was sharing at some organizations I'm with, they have their own dental clinic on a, in a bus. They have a breast cancer mammogram screening bus. And if you take it to the community, and you have people that look like them, that are providing some of the services, and how do we fix that gap, the equity gap, and having people go into law, and go into medical, and go into that? Because it's expensive, and if you're not a, a, a person that's generationally been to college, it's a barrier to go to law school, to go to medical school, to go to all those places. And I shared that I had a black OB-GYN for both my kids where I lived, because most of us, regardless of color, I mean, regardless of how much money you make, how successful you are, how educated you are, if you are a person of color, a woman of color, you still die at a higher rate from medical issues. So, what do, what can we do to, to bridge that gap is kind of what we were getting to, but we needed another hour, so...
Great. Would anyone, thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Pate, United Way, La Porte County. One of the things that we talked about at our table is something called an Equity Toolkit. United Way has one, you can find it online. But the point of it is, when we're in planning process, if we're doing program development, or even program evaluation, but really, if we can get in there right at the beginning, and ask the right questions, get the right people at the table, there are toolkits set up to help us do this, so that we don't create barriers unthinkingly, right? We could, we create these incredible programs, and we do it with all the best intentions, but you just come from who you are, right? And if you don't have all the right people around the table, you need a little help figuring out, what are the real questions to even be asking? And so, the toolkits are out there, and I encourage the use of them.
Thank you. Anyway, great. Go here, and then you're next.
Thank you. I would like to bring up some of the things on my mind, and, and as a... As a father, um, excuse me, um, I think we need some father programs in, to make it better, and also mental health programs. But, one thing that I did want to bring up, that bothers me, is this trafficking problem, on human trafficking. And this goes a long way, and I want to thank one of our great mayors, this is sitting over here, Sheila Bergerson, that under her administration, she, she, under public outcry, stepped in and shut down a bunch of illicit programs going on in, in our community. And, uh, I, I think that, as a father, that we need to work on teaching respect to women and everybody of children, and everything in regards to that. I think that's an important thing as a, as a father. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. And over here.
So, I, I agree with all I heard. My name's Danita Scully. I'm from the NAACP, La Porte County branch. But we talked about earlier, mental health, how mental health, I think, needs to be included in really everything that we do, and specifically for infant mortality and maternal mortality, because what we found, the new studies, or the studies that are taking place as of late, is that there's a huge percentage of substance abuse and heroin addiction that sort of leads to maternal mortality, and then also probably infant mortality. So, that's something that we, you know, really need to address in terms of the type of treatments that you want to engage in. Well, we also talked about the importance of including for young girls, fifth grade, you know, when I was, when my children were coming up, we taught them about health endeavors and sexuality when they're in the fifth grade, but we had to get parental permission to be able to do that. I don't know if you can do that in the public schools, because my children were in private school, but if you had some after-school programs, then you can kind of address that. And then, the other thing, I was listening to Ms. Angela Nelson-Deitch about taking the information to the neighborhoods, and to, and those sort of community leaders that can kind of get people together to hear what needs to be taught. It's important to do that. But it's important to also include oral health, physical health, emotional health, nutritional health. All those components, it needs to be sort of a comprehensive thing, if we want to really address the health needs of the individuals in our community. And then finally, I was thinking about the importance of family care coordination. I heard something about prenatal care coordination, right, where you have these individuals that kind of help those moms who are pregnant to kind of find the resources and the medical care, or the prenatal care that they need. But there are family care coordinators that can be trained, and also receive funding for that, that can help them to sort of navigate the healthcare system as well.
Thank you so much. I'm Marsha Pettit with Base Doula Program of Goodwill Missiana. And our table, we are all service providers. I know the majority of us here are. So, collectively, we talked about how we take care of ourselves as service care providers, and how are we being supported, and do we need resources? So, I think we all work in what could be considered high burnout career paths, and so, how do we take care of ourselves? So, we talked about not letting go of our joys and our passions, so not allowing our jobs, our positions, our careers to take over, having some downtime to spend with family. We also talked about having mental health professionals. And we talk a lot about having mental health professionals for our clients and our participants in our programs, who's taking care of us. So, it's very, very important, I know, for myself as a doula, it's important for me to debrief and unpack things with a mental health professional, so that's part of my How are we being supported? Support is huge. So, we talk about support with our clients, and who their support systems are, but as care providers, who's our support system? So, our leadership, our colleagues, our team, and our community is very important when it comes to having that support. So, we want to make sure that our village is, is a good village, a healthy village. The thing we talked about, our resources. We all provide resources to our clients. Who's providing resources for us? So, we want to make sure that goes back to the village. So, it goes back to our team, our colleagues, our directors, our support systems. We need to make sure that we're having the resources poured back into us, so we don't burn out, and we're able to provide the adequate care for our community.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else would like to say anything? Yes.
Hi, I'm Gigi Mealy. We have educators here, and a doctor, and a nurse, and, and a policewoman, so we have a big representation of the spectrum. But there are two of us here who are here with the Lubesnik Center for the Arts, and we think with all of these things that have been mentioned about healthcare, and emotional care, and education, that more education in the arts and music would be very beneficial for kids, for all of us, just because that helps so much for it with your mental health. And we also think there should be more midwives, more affordable daycare, more teachers aides in classrooms, and just more people like all of us. Thank you.
Anyone else want to talk? Well, great. That, that was awesome. Thank you so much for taking the time to answer those questions, to write it down for us, so that we can gather that information. I want to thank our guest speakers, Jody, Maria, Susan, and Dr. Button, and Keisha. Thank you. I want to thank Kia from Kia's Backyard Bistro, local, black-owned business. Please reach out. I want to thank all the commissioner, and especially our planning committee, Albertine Allen, Fay Moore, Bell Lee, and Bonnie Schaff. You know, we have just opened this, you know, the door. We scratched the surface of, of this collaboration, this conversation, and potential actions. So, the most important thing is coming. We have a survey coming in the next few weeks, and we really need to hear from all of you. So, I hope you all put your emails down. If there's anyone that you, is not here, that you think should be a part of this survey, we would like, let us know. Again, we have, we want to find out the ways, what are the gaps, highlight the positives, and move us forward. And we will share all of those outcomes with you. You know, if we come together to evolve and look at our differences as assets, we can make changes in the health disparities that will, in turn, help create an equitable world that will allow all of us to thrive, regardless of our race, abilities, and backgrounds. When we are all given the opportunity to succeed, we will all succeed. And so, I want to thank you guys again for all of your work, your dedication to the field, and, and for being here today to share all this with us. So, really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. One last thing. Can everyone just do the embrace one more time? You know, sometimes we just need that hug, just do it every day. So, yes, we have one more thing. And also, on the table is materials. Please continue the conversations with everyone here. Thank you, thanks again for being here.